I call to order the September 23, 2020 special meeting of the Morris Township Committee. The legal notice requiring the ordinance for the public hearing is satisfied and the statement satisfying saying will be executed. Madam Clark, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Arvinides.
Here.
Mr. Mancuso.
Here.
Mr. Jorphy.
Here.
Mr. Griselle.
Here.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carlson, the ordinance that we will be considering tonight, please. Carlson, are you there?
I'm here.
Can you give us a preview of the ordinance we're going to be considering tonight?
Apologies, let me bring up my agenda. Sorry, I did not receive an agenda for tonight, so I need to get it off the township website, so please bear with me.
Do you want me to read the agenda?
Would you please, that'd be great.
I can just read it.
That would be, somebody can read it.
The iteration tonight is ordinance dash 0720, an ordinance of Township of Morris recommending the adoption of the Abbey, Abbey, Allwood Hall redevelopment plan regarding the property identified on Morris Township's tax net as block 8409 lot 1, 355 Madison Avenue, Morris Township pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. So with that, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's special meeting. Tonight is a continuation of the public hearing on the Abbey redevelopment plan for the record as the COVID requirements are still in place. We're holding tonight's meeting primarily by Zoom. With us in person are Deputy Mayor Griselle, Administrator Quinn, and myself, Kathy Wilson, Mayor. Joining us by Zoom are Committeeman John Arvinides, Mark Jorphy, and Peter Mancuso. Also our planner, the Township's planner, Paul Phillips, and our municipal attorney, Scott Carlson. Also joining us are, according to my notes here, my screen, 48 people from the public are on line with us this evening. Tonight is the continuation of the public hearing that began on August 26th, continued on September 3rd, and is now continuing tonight. During the two previous meetings, we heard testimony from our planner, Mr. Phillips, another planner, Mr. Peter Steff, who was hired by one or more of our residents who are objectors. We heard from representatives of our historic preservation groups, Carol Barkin of Morris Township's Historic Preservation Commission. We also heard from Ann Curry, who is the Executive Director of the Morris County Historical Society. In addition, we heard from David Stancheck, who is the President and Chief Estate and Development Officer of Restoration Hardware. And we also heard in addition from many members of the public. Anyone who wished to speak had three separate five-minute opportunities in which to share their thoughts. Public comment portion of this public hearing is now closed, and we are moving to the next phase of this hearing, which is the opportunity for Township Committee members to share what Mr. Mancuso calls are each of our own thought processes, after which we'll discuss our thoughts together, and then we will vote. After the vote, depending on the outcome, we will be discussing what the next steps will be. And for anyone looking at the agenda, you will see public comment on the agenda. This meeting is a public meeting, and public comment is part of every public meeting, including this one. So before getting into the Township Committee comments and discussion, Mr. Phillips is going to give us a brief overview of how this whole redevelopment process works, since some of us, as we go through and mention our comments, may be referencing various parts of this process, which is, it's complex. And so we want to start with what I call a primer, an overview of how the entire process works. So with that, Mr. Phillips, would you be able to join in?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I would ask is for the Township Committee to consider would be two minor changes to the redevelopment plan, neither of which is significant in nature, in my opinion. And I'll explain the rationale for each. So the first would be on page 10, under the heading Parking Setbacks, and specifically the third bullet. And that change would be in the setback from the southerly property line, which currently reads 15 feet. And the proposal would be to increase that to 20 feet. And I think as you recall during the second night of the public hearing, that was discussed. And obviously, it would provide for additional buffering to the rear property lines of the residences on Crescent Drive. The second change for consideration would be on page 23, and that would be under the section that is entitled Internal Site and Rear Lot Buffer Landscaping. And what I would propose is one additional sentence at the end of that section, and that sentence would read as follows. "In addition to landscape plantings, a fence or wall may be included in the buffer." And again, this would provide additional flexibility in terms of what ultimately will be installed in that buffer, again, should the plan be adopted, depending upon, and this would be further sort of vetted based on the discussions that take place at the time of site plan approval. And those discussions would obviously include the redeveloper, the neighbors, and the planning board. I would just add on this topic of the changes that if there is a motion this evening to adopt the redevelopment plan, it should incorporate these changes, and again, assuming that these changes are so desired as part of that motion. So I just wanted to alert the Township Committee to that. The other thing that I wanted to just briefly discuss, Mayor, was the process that would move forward should the redevelopment plan be adopted this evening by the Township Committee. And clearly, I say that with no pretense as to how the Township Committee is going to vote on this. I believe there's been some confusion during the hearing process on this issue, and I would like to just clarify it a bit, as least as I see appropriate. So the first thing is, if the Township Committee does not approve, does not vote to approve the redevelopment plan, the process ends right here. Secondly, if the Township Committee votes to adopt the redevelopment plan, the next step in the process would be the designation of the redeveloper and the adoption of a redevelopment agreement between the redeveloper and the township. And as has been discussed, the township also has the ability, under the redevelopment statute, to enter into a financial agreement with the redeveloper, and as I've stated on the record, that is not mandatory but voluntary. I would just emphasize that the particulars of any prospective redevelopment agreement or financial agreement should not be discussed prior to the adoption of the redevelopment plan. And certainly, I say that being aware of the fact that there's been a lot of discussion about what some of the additional safeguards may be that can potentially be put into the redevelopment agreement. And I'm also aware, and part of this was on the record from Mr. Stancheck, I'm aware that the prospective redeveloper has made certain representations of what it is willing to agree to as well. However, I would again just stress that these discussions and negotiations should not take place until the redevelopment plan is adopted, and again, assuming it will be adopted. By the way, the redevelopment agreement is and will be adopted by ordinance, and a public hearing would be held accordingly. Assuming the redevelopment plan is adopted and redevelopment and financial agreements are approved, then the next step in the process is the redeveloper can file an application for site plan approval with the planning board. And as you're well aware, there are certainly members of the Township Committee that sit on the planning board. This is where all the detailed engineering plans, architectural plans are basically prepared and considered by the planning board. And while not exhaustive, this would include things such as lighting, landscaping, buffering, grading, tree removal and replacement, traffic impact studies, stormwater management, as well as the details of building design, and that would include both the adaptive reuse of the abbey as well as any new construction. And also, as I think you're all aware, the site plan application will be the subject of a public hearing, and the planning board will hear from any interested members of the public. So Mayor, I, thanks for your time on this, and I just wanted to wish the Township Committee well in its deliberations this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. So to be clear, our discussion tonight is strictly on the redevelopment plan. I know that's a little hard to stay focused on because so many of the issues that have come up, especially recently, connect with other portions of the redevelopment process. But that is the constraint that we'll under this evening. So with that, I would say a few highlights of my own thought process. I have communicated with many, many different people in our community, and in many different ways, not just through the public hearings, but through many other formats, emails, phone calls, Zoom meetings, many in-person conversations, which I view as particularly important because when you can talk with someone for an extended period of time, you can develop a deeper understanding of what your concerns are, and you can share information two-way, in a way that is not possible in other communication formats. So it is very important to me to understand what people think, what they feel, and why. And I've worked very hard to do that. I know this is an extremely important decision for our community, and I've worked very hard to understand the full range of views that are present in our community. I've listened carefully, I've reflected deeply, and I do feel that I have a good understanding of the full range of views, which includes questions, comments, concerns, suggestions, objections, the full range that is present. The range of views on supporting this project, in my experience, range from, there are some people who strongly oppose it, and there are others who are enthusiastic supporters. And our challenge as the Township Committee is to make a decision which, in our judgment, serves the best interest of our community. So a few factors that have influenced my own thought process. One is what I have nicknamed the fork in the road consideration. By that, I mean that this property has been vacant since 2008. I frame it in my thinking as either we go with some version of the proposal that's before us, or the most likely alternative, not guaranteed, but a likely alternative would be that this property gets turned into condos. And in addition, if this proposal does not pass, it seems likely, not guaranteed, but it does seem likely, that the abbey, the building, could possibly, could very well be demolished. Another factor that's influenced my thought process is historic preservation. I love the historic structures, this is a beautiful building, and my experience is that virtually everyone in our community agrees that preserving the abbey is a good thing for all of us, it's a good thing for our community. I do feel that the developer we're speaking with is uniquely situated to do a good job with that. It's a specialized skill, and I do feel that with the developer we're talking with, should that developer be selected, that they are in equal positions to do a good job with historic preservation of this property. I've also heard, I've talked with many people across our community, I've heard support from many different places, not just the historic preservation folks, but countless numbers of individuals from all across Morris Township. Our Economic Development Advisory Committee issued a statement in support of this. In my own neighborhood, I've reached out to as many people as possible, and I have not heard from one person in my neighborhood who opposes the project. And my neighborhood, by the way, is right off of Madison Avenue, right off of Old Glen, and there are many people, including me, will be directly affected by the traffic of this proposal, but there's a lot of support among people for the benefits that this proposal does bring to the community. I've also heard, of course, many concerns. They are, I've heard them sort of three categories of concerns, site density, traffic, and parking. I can't tell you how much time all of us have spent, tons of time, discussing, brainstorming, trying to figure out all the different options for addressing these concerns. This is where I've personally spent a great deal of time talking with the neighbors who are most directly impacted by things like parking, and I consider those conversations vital to finding solutions. But these neighbors' concerns, to me, do deserve special attention, and that attention has been given. I'm not going to go into the weeds here about all the solution options that we've considered, but I will say that bottom line for me is that I am confident that significant mitigation measures can and will be taken to address the concerns that have been raised. And if this plan is adopted, there will be significant content added to the redevelopment agreement to address many of the concerns that our residents have raised. Let's see here. As far as traffic, a couple of things there, yes, traffic is a concern. There's more attention to that at the site plan level. And the one point I did want to make about that, as far as addressing traffic concerns, an important thought process to me in thinking about traffic, is not only what can be done to address the traffic, but what can be done to decrease the number of vehicles that might make their way to the site? And there, I see a need for us, I see an opportunity really, for us to work on ways to increase the pedestrian access and make the site more walkable. It did occur to me, a comparison with the Paper Mill Playhouse, if you've ever seen it, they encourage people to come there by train and walk from the train to the theater, and they make the sidewalks between the train station and the theater inviting and attractive and easily accessible for pedestrians. So to me, that is one thought for addressing the traffic. I also feel that this proposal would be an important anchor on the Madison Avenue corridor, as Mr. Phillips has said several times during the course of our public hearings. Madison Avenue corridor is an area in transition. We have many vacant buildings there, the Wells Fargo Bank, the TD Bank, the office building on Old Glen and Madison, to name a few, plus a couple others. And I've been advocating for, actually for years, that it would benefit our community to come together as a community and envision what we would like the future to look like, things that we would like to see and things that we would not like to see. And I think that puts us in a better position going forward, as opposed to just sort of reactively responding to any proposals that get brought to us by developers who have every legal right to propose whatever they want. So to me, the visioning piece is extremely important, and I see the anchoring that this proposal would provide as an important step in that direction. So this proposal is not perfect. There are concerns remaining. I do see benefits. I do feel especially sensitive to the concerns that have been raised by the immediate neighbors. I do feel that the majority of these concerns can be raised in the redevelopment agreement and the site plan. And from a community perspective, on balance, I do believe that supporting this plan serves the best interest of our community. So with that, I will, we're gonna.
Ask some questions.
Oh, I forgot to do that. Okay. Can you wait until it's your turn, or it's gonna, okay. All right. Mr. Griselle has some questions that he'd wanted asked at the beginning of the meeting. So before going on to the next Township Committee member for their thought process, Mr. Griselle has a couple of questions for Mr. Phillips.
And I would suggest if any other Township Committee members have questions, they should have the opportunity to ask Mr. Phillips as well. Mr. Phillips, I'd like to talk about parking and get some clarification on several elements on page 10 of the plan. So the amendment, one of the amendments that you mentioned in the beginning about increasing the parking to 20 feet, it says setback from southern property line, 20 feet. In the next amendment, you talk about building a wall or fence along Crescent Drive. My first suggestion is that instead of saying a setback from the southern property line, which to me is not clear, we all have, I think, different visions of what southern is, I'd like to suggest that maybe we say setback from the Crescent Drive property line, just to make it eminently clear of what we're talking about, not just southern. And there are other mentions in the, on page 10, when we talk about setbacks, we use the term at least virtually everywhere, except for this one bullet point in the hearing that says setback from the southern property line, and it just says cold at 15 feet, wherever else it says at least 60 feet, at least 35 feet. So I wanted to suggest that we make those changes, and my first question is, would those be okay with you?
So I just realized, Jeff, that I was not hearing you well, and it was at my end in terms of, I had to put up my volume, I don't know what happened to it. So I heard part of it, but if you can go through just the particular changes on the page numbers, and then I can respond.
Sure, I'll do it again. Just to be clear.
Thank you.
Mr. Jorphy, can you hear me clearly? Not so well?
It's like you're talking from across the room.
Is this better?
Yes.
That's better? Okay, I'll keep the microphone close to me, so maybe that was part of the problem. So I wanted to talk about page 10 in the redevelopment plan, which deals with parking, and one of the amendments that Mr. Phillips spoke about at the beginning had to be dealt with an increase of 15 to 20 feet under the parking. He referenced on page 10 the setback of the southern property line.
Correct.
To me, that, I know that some people have an idea of what southern property line is in this case, but I'm not sure that it's clear to everybody, and I had to be corrected at one point. So when we talk about the walls and the fences that you also discussed, we talked about along Crescent Drive. So I wanted to suggest that we change the language to say setback from the Crescent Drive property line, so it's clear exactly what property line we're talking about. And I also wanted to add the words of at least 20 feet, instead of just a hard 20 feet, in case somehow there might be more room to be had.
So, is there, I'm sorry, Jeff, is there more?
Yes, there is more. With regard, so I'm going to skip to section 3B2, which is preservation of the front lawn.
Can we, I think it'd be better if we dealt with this as we go? So can I respond to the suggestions on page 10?
Yes, that's fine. I think it's better that way, too.
Yeah. So I would just indicate that in the title subsection, Parking Setbacks, it clearly says the minimum setbacks. So I don't think we need to put in the words at least, because that's already accounted for in the first sentence. With regard to the setback from southern property line, if, after, I mean, I think it's pretty clear, and we went through this, and I think by process of elimination, you kind of know that's the southern property line, but if you feel more comfortable, I wouldn't have an issue if, after southern property line, you put in some, you know, parenthetical with the reference to Crescent Drive.
Okay, I'd be happy with just putting that in parentheses, just so it's clear for the record. So that's good. So if we go to 3B2, and which talks of the preservation of the front lawn, and says that it's intended a significant portion of the existing front lawn, the abbey, retained and preserved, the existing entry drive from Madison Avenue shall be retained in its current location and shall be to the drop-off circle, all portions of which shall be located at least 60 feet from the Madison Avenue property boundary. That part is okay with me. It's the next sentence that I have a little trouble with, where it talks about the alignment of the driveways to the north, the drop-off circle towards Ant Hill shall be oriented further away from the Madison Avenue property boundaries, such as any parallel parking space shall be set back at least 100 feet from Madison Avenue. Now, you have said numerous times at this body that the next step in this process is that it's going to site plan at the planning board, and that the planning board is going to do the traffic analysis, the parking analysis, all these kinds of things. I don't want in any way to tie the hands of the planning board to restrict them in the areas that they are most expertise in. And when we state where it has to be setback at least 100 feet from Madison Avenue, and it's not really a bullet point, it just seems like a add-on sentence, I think that's restricting the planning board a bit. I think that simply stating at least 60 feet away from Madison Avenue, and I understand that Madison Avenue angles, is sufficient for me, and I don't, again, want to restrict the planning board, so I wanted to suggest to the body that we take out that last sentence from the alignment of the driveway to the north, all the way through 100 feet from Madison Avenue. I wanted your thoughts on that.
Well, my thoughts, Jeff, is I respectfully disagree with you. And let me try and explain the logic, and I think you pointed it out actually in one of the last references that you made, and if you look at the exhibit, Figure 5 on page 15, you're correct, and the reason that we can get 100 feet there is because the angle of Madison Avenue relative to the angle of the existing building and the proposed addition. And ultimately, what And ultimately, what we wanted to do is preserve as much of the front lawn as possible. And clearly, if we take that out, there's going to be the ability for the developer to basically indicate that they can do additional parking and potentially a parking module, meaning perpendicular spaces in that front lawn area where, and and Jim can chime in as well, but we spent a lot of time on this in the plan, that we think it's better that that area be preserved as part of the front lawn. And the only parking within that 100-foot section there be the parallel parking, so the intimate parallel parking off the main access drives on either side of the circle in front of the entrance to the building. So I I understand where you're coming from in terms of flexibility, but we spent a good, long amount of time on this. And just from my own perspective, I I would recommend leaving that language in. And I'd also just remind you that, you know, like, like any zoning ordinance, there's a process by which if for some reason it turns out during site plan approval that there needs to be some relaxation of the standards to accommodate something or other, there is a process whereby the applicant in the board can entertain deviations, meaning variances from the plan. But I just feel strongly that we should leave that language in. And if Jim wants to add one way or the other, I would welcome that.
And just to be clear, I was drawing, drawing some notes down, but you're talking about that preservation of the front lawn area, that language towards the end of that paragraph.
Correct. So there, just to be clear on where I'm going with this, is the front lawn area could really be broken into two pieces. One is the area in front of the abbey and one is the area in front of a yet-to-be-built structure, which is not the abbey, which is not historic, and to be determined what it's going to look like. I'm sure it's going to look very, very nice. But the point of preservation of the front lawn is not to restrict the view of the abbey itself. And getting back to my point of not restricting the tying the hands of the planning board in determining what they feel as experts should be the optimal parking plan for the site, I felt like that sentence did that. And in addition, in the parking setbacks above, in the first bullet point, where the first bullet point says it shall be setback, it'll be 60 feet from Madison Avenue, and then it ends with and shall be restricted to parallel parking spaces only. Again, I find that very restrictive to what the planning board has the right to determine, which is an optimal parking plan. We also say in the next bullet point, where we talk about setback from Canfield Road of 5 feet, and then it says parking between the building and Canfield Road shall be restricted to parallel parking spaces only. Again, I find that very restrictive for the planning board because if the building's war, and I'm not saying they're going to, I don't want to, I don't want to lead anybody astray, but there might be changes to the layout or placement of buildings. And if there's an opportunity to do head-in parking, I'm not sure what the right term is, head-in parking instead of parallel parking, to get more parking on that side of the building, I don't see why we shouldn't have this restrictive language in the redevelopment plan of saying parallel parking spaces only. Because I just viewed it as, as we've said over and over and over again, that that's a site plan element to be determined by the planning board. So all of these elements combined, I just make it look too restrictive to me. And I think we should relax the language in this area. Does this make, does this make sense to you, Mayor?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. If I'm clear to you, I hope I'm clear to everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll let you respond, Paul, but that's my.
Jeff, I've responded, I've responded. I'm not going to be argumentative. I feel strongly that it belongs there. And but it's, it's ultimately up to the township committee.
And I would say that, you know, parking out in those areas, it's, you know, especially the front lawn area from Madison Avenue, I'd say that really takes away from the site.
But I understand that, but if we're allowing parallel parking, so you're gonna have a car facing the street, doesn't matter if it's the side of the car or the front of the car, it's still a car facing the street. And for us to say it has to be parallel parking, I don't see that that's our perky. Quite frankly, that's, that is a planning board site plan issue about how the car should be parked on the site. So I don't mind setting minimum setbacks. But to tell them, tell people that it has to be parked a certain way and tie the hands of the planning board, I don't think is proper. And and again, I think we should give them the leeway by just keeping the 60 feet and and not saying the 100 feet. And if there's a way to shift parking a little bit, that's acceptable to everybody, that can alleviate parking in other areas, I think we should allow the planning board to do their job. That's, that's, so. With that said, there are a couple of amendments that I would suggest. And I, I'll reiterate those in my.
For the plan?
For the plan itself, which is removing all, all references to parallel parking. Because again, I think that's a site plan issue, and we should be determining that here. And suit to complete that sentence that says 100 feet and just leave it at a flat 60 feet from Madison Avenue. And and let the planning board do their job in determining the optimal parking plan for the site.
And one other thing I would say, just as a follow-up to that, is, you know, you've mentioned in the past, I think it's known that those kind of are display areas for nice cars. I think that's what they would, you know, stick at those locations. And to go to, you know, conventional head-in parking at those locations, I think takes away from having parallel parking, you know, in the site.
The planning board can still determine that that parallel parking is appropriate there and the applicant can still request that at the planning board level. And, but I'm just saying there should be a discussion by the experts in this area, which is the planning board doing site plan analysis and not this by.
Hey, Jeff, Jeff, can I, and again, I don't want to be argumentative and you're clearly have a very strong opinion, but just understand that your professionals spent.
We lost you, Paul. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry?
We lost.
Can you hear?
You're back.
Okay, so I just, again, I don't want to be argumentative, but just understand that your professionals spent a good deal of time on this issue as part of all the design iterations that were gone through in terms of the conceptual site plan. And I think it's fair to say that both Jim and myself feel strongly that this is a design safeguard that belongs in the plan. And I think it's, it belongs, and I feel so strongly that it, that it belongs in the plan that the only basis for some relief would be at the time of site plan, that for whatever reasons that this, this standard does not work, the, the redeveloper has the ability to seek relief. I mean, that's, that's what the variance and deviation provisions are for. So all I can tell you is, we feel strongly, and we spent a lot of time with it. And, you know, but obviously, everyone's entitled to their opinion.
Right, so, so getting to what you just said about requesting relief, can you, can you explain that a little bit more? So what exactly, and what kind, what kind of relief can be requested at the planning board level once this plan is in place?
There can be, there can be requests for any deviation from the standards, just like a zoning ordinance. They, anyone can come in and request and entertain a deviation with the, with the planning board from a setback standard, from a parking setback. Obviously, as you know, Jeff, you sit on the planning board. The planning board doesn't have to grant any of the relief. It's gonna, it would have to listen to the arguments. All I'm suggesting is, is again, because I feel strongly, given all of the effort that went into this, to keep this standard in there. And if for some reason, when the details of site plan come into play, that this area, it's important that this area be breached, then the applicant can make a request for relief and the planning board can entertain that request, just like in connection with any site plan application.
And given that this is the redevelopment, if they request that relief, does it then have to come back to the township committee?
No, no, the, the only, the only areas where the township committee would have the jurisdiction is with regard to anything that rises to the level of a D variance under the municipal land use statute. So if they wanted to change the uses, it would have to come back to the township committee to amend the redevelopment plan. But if they wanted to basically seek a, a, a parking setback or a building setback, they have the ability, like under any zoning ordinance, to seek that relief.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll follow up with that question. I appreciate the question, Jeff. And Mr. Phillips and Slates pins on it. I guess my follow-up question is then, we know how the professionals recommend it. I brought this up before, but what is the net negative for making such a change that Jeff proposed, aside from, you know, our professionals feeling strongly against it to maintain the view shed or the, you know, just the integrity of the front yard area, I suppose, if, if providing the, the planning board more leeway?
Is that a question of Mr. Phillips?
It's, either. I mean, I guess if, if they have to make a change or a change has to be made that comes back to us, would providing the planning board more flexibility actually alleviate some of the back and forth?
They would want to not have to come back to the township committee if the planning board can grant that relief.
But, but can I just add one thing, Mark, which, again, why I feel strongly about this, is if you allow that flexibility now, the redeveloper will then have every right under the redevelopment plan to, to basically breach and encroach on that front yard area with a parking module that would not be just parallel parking off the access road. And I think that it would really be detrimental to that vista. And they can do it as of right if you remove that provision. They could do it as of right and there's nothing the planning board could do about it.
Understood, okay. And my personal view is that I personally am okay with having more parking up front so long as it is not encroaching on the view shed of the actual original abbey building. I'm not as concerned about the new structures being put in, but I'm curious to hear the thoughts of the other committee members during their commentary. I'll provide more during mine, but thank you for the time.
So what we have here is Mr. Griselle asking questions of Mr. Phillips that you wanted to ask at the beginning of the meeting. And are there any, my suggestion is we put these on the table for now. Are there, you seem like you had other ones.
No, that's my own question.
That's your question?
Relating to the parking.
Okay. So my, my thought is, how about we put that on the side and hear from the other committee members, come back to it at the end when we consider all the various amendments we've got on the table. That's my.
I just wonder if I could, if anybody other, has, anybody else has questions for Mr. Phillips?
Okay, is there anyone else on the township committee who has any questions for Mr. Phillips before we get into sharing our own views? Okay, now with that, then, we're gonna, we're gonna move through, basically, automatically, Mr. Ravi Nees, to share your comments on this project or on this ordinance?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank all of our professionals for the time and effort that they've put in. As always, very much appreciated that they look out for the best interest of our community. All of you know where I feel, how I feel on this, on this project. I'm gonna go through a bit of detail as to why and how I, I feel this way. Basically, you know, there's comments made that this benefits our community. I think the only benefit here is for the property owner and for Restoration Hardware. They're, they're in this to make a lot of money. And, you know, it's not, it's not a benefit to Morris Township. There was a comment that it's an anchor for the, for the area. You know, we're not a shopping center that we need an anchor to then bring more traffic to the community. RH will bring a lot of traffic, whatever it is that is estimated, it will be more. I've been to the New York location, I've been to the West Palm Beach location, and there are a lot of people that go to these places, that go, go to the Restoration Hardware. And it's definitely going to be more than whatever the projections are. RH does not go to communities so that they don't have a lot of people come. They're, they're, they're very smart. They're, they're, they're very smart business people. So they're not going to Morris Township because people aren't going to come. They will. You know, so also, you know, I don't think it's fair to instill the, the fear of condos. I'm not in favor of condos going there either. I'd rather just see the abbey just be the abbey. But, you know, to say that, you know, if this doesn't happen, condos are going to come in. Based on our ordinances, most of our projects, if for whatever reason it does go to be condos, is six to the acre, which means that they can only put 30 units there, if it was to go that way, which is far less than the monstrosity of a building that's going to be there for RH and the amount of vehicles that are going to be coming in and out of that property. The other thing that we need to look at is not only the traffic, but the stress that's going to be put on our first responders. Whenever you have a, a, a large group of vehicles parked, there's a high potential for car theft and car break-ins and other issues that might happen at that location. So it will put another stress on our police department especially and also then our other first responders. You know, so I'm not sure if, whatever the benefit, if there is a benefit of RH coming to that location, is if it's, if it's worth the cost that it affects the neighboring residents. Because all, all in all, this does not necessarily benefit a resident that lives all the way on the other side of town. Yes, pilot money will be coming in. I didn't have a chance to run the present value of, of what that actually equals, assuming that it even lasts as long as we think it's going to last. So on top of that, it's also, we're taking money away from our schools, which I don't think is, is a fair thing to do, especially in these times right now. So, you know, going with the pilot program, which again helps RH, it also helps future committees in the event that they don't have experience in budgeting, because there's extra money. So all in all, you know, it sounds more like this is something selfish as far as RH and the landowner rather than what really is the true benefit to all of Morris Township. I don't have anything to, anything else to say right now.
Thank you, Mr. Ravi Nees.
One, one more thing. We're, we're preserving supposedly the abbey. The abbey will not look like the abbey anymore once, once this addition is put on. So, and if I'm not mistaken, only two-thirds of the abbey is being, is going to be saved, which at the end of the day, it's not the abbey anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., let's see, Mr. Jorkey?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have comments prepared. They're a bit lengthy, so I appreciate your patience. And I just want to start off, I, I think I, I appreciate the fact that all the committee members have difference, differing opinions on this matter. I think there are a lot of different parts or aspects of this proposed plan that hit home for each other. And I think I am happy that we've all respect that and respect we all have different, difference in opinions. And I appreciate everything being cordial as we discuss moving forward. So I will move to my prepared remarks. So thank you, Mayor, for your remarks and for your many hours of hard work that you have spent on this project over the past several months, from ensuring we were proceeding in a fair way that was COVID compliant, to organizing meetings with residents. to organizing meetings with residents and Restoration Hardware, to sending out detailed letters to residents through the municipal messenger, I think you have demonstrated that the township committee's commitment to ensuring our residents' voices were heard throughout the process. I'd also like to thank our professionals for their hours that they have spent working on this proposal, taking the feedback from the committee, our residents and the developer to try to find common ground and create a finished product, which is this redevelopment plan. I know it's been very difficult at times and I appreciate your patience and I appreciate the professionals' guidance and pushback when they feel strongly towards something that is crucial for us to make informed decisions. I'd like to start by providing some context on my experience of reviewing this redevelopment plan. This is the first of its kind for me personally to participate in since being elected to the township committee. From beginning, from the beginning when I walked the property back in March to when I visited neighbors' yards this summer, I've kept the impact of the immediate neighbors' homes foremost in my mind along with the plan's lasting impact on the Madison Avenue corridor. I'd like to highlight some key points that have impacted my decision whether or not to approve the proposed plan. I think that Restoration Hardware so far has made good faith efforts to work with the immediate neighbors and to hear their concerns to try to make improvements to the aspects of the redevelopment plan. I'm appreciative of their commitment to adapt the phasing of the construction and renovation work, including the priority of installation of the buffer and surrounding properties of the residents. I personally have pushed to adjust the parking lot above Crescent Drive to include more space on the Madison Avenue side and elsewhere. And I'm encouraged by the proposal from RH, provided in a memo provided to the township committee with details pertaining to the proposed buffers on Crescent Drive and the Canfield Road extension, along with increasing the setback of the parking lot from 15 to 20 feet on the Crescent Drive side. I think they've, Restoration Hardware has committed in writing also willingness to prohibit left turns onto Canfield Road, which I think is a positive. And their memo also documents their commitment to beginning, to being cognizant to lighting and noise from the business and to install fixtures that will be low impact to the neighbors. I'd also like to note that they have documented their commitments preserving historic features of the Abbey in an attempt to restore it for years of enjoyment to come. While additions dating from the 1980s will be removed, I'm confident that the historic preservation work prescribed and RH's commitment to working with the Historic Preservation Commission and their past work on historical locations across the country are reasons to feel comfortable that the Abbey would be in good hands and, and see the restoration it deserves should this plan be approved. I'd also like to point out that the redevelopment plan requires public works improvements that is a net positive for the taxpayers of the town with the developer realigning the intersection at Canfield and Madison Avenue and installing sidewalks. After reviewing the plan in detail, listening to residents' remarks, meeting with neighbors and visiting their properties, researching Restoration Hardware's past work and their current business model, I believe that moving forward with the redevelopment plan is the responsible decision to make. That is not due to only considering the proposal in front of us right now, but also deliberating on what realistic alternatives would be. If Restoration Hardware won't revive the Abbey, who will step in and do it? If Restoration Hardware is proposing to invest a significant sum of money to preserve a structure that is at higher risk each day to meeting the wrecking ball, who is going to come in to save it? If not now, then when will we have a chance like this again? Currently, the property has existing, is, exists in an open space government use zoning. While I'd love to see it maintained zoning, keeping it that way for government use or other purposes is not currently feasible with the absence of an interested buyer. I don't see any government entity that can afford to purchase a structure such as this for government use. And if, if not this plan, what will come next? Is it worth the risk to wait for another plan that may contain many of the same issues the developer? With a developer who is less willing to provide high quality buffers or pay attention to detail? That could include other commercial uses or it could include residential uses. Will there be other developers if this proposal is improved, of course? Will residents face similar challenges with setbacks and buffers in future plans? Most likely. Will future developers have the resources and expertise and the will to invest in landscape design and high end infrastructure? I'm not sure if that is very likely. If the redevelopment plan passes tonight, I believe the township committee will exhibit a thorough review of the future redevelopment agreement and hold RH to their promises, which have been made in writing. I'm also confident that the planning board will provide a thorough review of the site plan. There are many factors, requests and changes that have been appealed, that I've appealed for during this process that our professionals have stated occur at the site plan level and will be included in the redevelopment agreement. For the record, I would like to note that I have made a focus on appealing for high quality buffers for the immediate neighbors with vegetation up to eight feet high, walls up to, or fences up to six feet high and large trees, requiring the buffers to be installed before the large scale construction begins, lighting fixtures that minimize the impact on neighboring houses, prohibiting large scale events, providing historic preservation plans, including electric vehicle charging stations with standards that I intend to recommend to the township committee in the coming months and continued communications with residents. The Abbey redevelopment plan provides us with the opportunity for this site to be an anchor for the Madison Avenue corridor, and I will echo, echo the mayor's statement on anchor, setting the precedent for the quality of future development that we wish to, wish to see. I wish I could say that more proposals are far off on the horizon for this section of town, but unfortunately, due to the current existing, existence of vacant properties on Madison Avenue, we know that additional proposals will likely be coming in the near future, which is why I am in complete support and urge our Economic Development Advisory Committee to move ahead with the visioning project of Madison Avenue to give our residents, planners and township government the ability onto paper on what we want Madison Avenue to look like in the years to come. We have to do everything we can to ensure consistency and to provide resident input on what is coming down the road. Now is our opportunity to set the bar for our standards for Madison Avenue. In closing, Mayor, I appreciate the efforts made by Restoration Hardware, our township professionals and the township committee on reviewing this plan. I also would like to especially thank our residents who have had the chance to speak, who I have had the chance to speak with over the past several months, and to everyone who has participated, or participated in our meetings and sent us comments. Ultimately, I support approving the redevelopment plan because of how important it is to set the precedent of Madison Avenue and because Restoration Hardware has proven itself not only willing to make concessions for the neighbors and the governing body, but also because of their track record of, of quality work that we, the quality work we can expect of a finished product here in Morris Township. Thank you, Mayor, you're back.
Thank you, Mr. Jorphy. Mr. Mankuso?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate your time and I appreciate the comments of my fellow township committee people before. Excuse me. I've certainly listened to the concern of neighbors carefully as this is not an easy decision. I've thought long and hard about this situation. I've had many sleepless nights and I think as I look at it, I think that RH and our experts have made positive changes to the project with articulate compromise to try to respond to the apprehensions of those affected. On the final adjudication, with the extension of setbacks from up to 20 feet and the willingness of restoration to adjust the buffers to protect the contiguous neighbors and with the planning board's oversight, we should have a worthwhile project that the township can be proud of. The most salient thought with the voting for the RH plan is the probability of a dense townhome project on this sensitive corner and the possibility of other projects of similar nature springing up near to the Abbey. There are at least three other sites looking informally to build townhouses. That's my most salient point and I'd like to repeat it. The thought of, of voting for this is the probability of a dense townhome project on this sensitive corner and the possibility of other projects of a similar nature springing up near to the Abbey. There are at least three other sites looking informally to build townhouses. I've spent 18 years on the planning board during my tenure and I have every confidence that our board will act in a manner that responds to the 24,000 people of our town. Paul Phillips, our planner, and Jim Slate, he is the, Paul is the premier planner in the county, if not the state, and I know that he has done everything possible to make this a pedable to all involved. I'm very happy to also go along with the fact of no left turns onto Canfield Road. I've also said that I think there should be no parking on other side of Canfield Road from Route 24 in the other direction, and that will be determined by the planning board, I hope. I've been on the site many times, I've lived here for 52 years and I've been in and out of that place. The letter from Mr. Vitolo on behalf of Restoration Hardware outlining all their plans to make this project worse, I work, I think is a very, very important thing that we have to know about. As I said earlier, I have thought long and hard about this and frankly, the first person I told of my decision was my wife Lois at dinner last night. I have thought everything that is done in a, in a, in a situation like this, having gone through the honeywell, is not perfect, but I think the majority of the problems and difficulties can be handled. And I feel very, very strongly that the project should take place to prevent the delineation and difficulties right across Madison Avenue. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mankuso. Deputy Mayor Grisell?
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. I just want to thank everybody who's been involved. Thank you to the professionals, your hard work has been tremendous. Although Mr. Phillips and Mr. Slater, the forward facing professionals, the behind the scenes, we have Mr. Quinn and Mr. Carlson, who have also put in significant time towards this project. So I thank, thank all of you for your time. I want to give particular thanks to Mayor Wilson. The amount of outreach that Kathy Wilson has done to the community is just tremendous. She has had numerous personal meetings with residents, taking up much of her personal time to make sure she understood that all the concerns, try to work out solutions. And although you can't satisfy 100% of the people 100% of the time, I really think Kathy made, you made just tremendous efforts to do outreach to the community and that's very lawful, so thank you for doing that. I also want to thank the residents. There's been a lot of involvement in this process and members of this governing body have always said that we like to receive, like to hear comments from the residents, their opinions, their views, what their outlook is for the town. You name it, this body is always open to hearing what the residents have to say. And I am very pleased with the resident participation in this process. It's not just been what we've seen here on Zoom, but all, all the township committee members have received numerous emails and communications from residents. And I really appreciate the time that everybody took from the public to participate in the project and make sure that the township committee understood your views and such relating to this project. Let me first address my prior discussion with Mr. Phillips regarding the parking setback. I was not aware that the planning board could deviate from what was in a redevelopment plan if they so chose and deem appropriate and they could, they could grant those variances such as like they do with any kind of zoning. So I am satisfied then if we're not tying the hands of the planning board as such as, as was stated to me, then I'm okay with leaving the language the way it is and not making those suggested changes that I have with the, with the understanding that we're not tying the planning board's hands and they still have the ability to deviate if they so deem appropriate. I'd also like to address something that Mr. Arvenidi said and just make sure that the public understands one of his comments relating to the school district and funding for the school district. So we're going to have a much bigger discussion of this down the road in a, in a month or two at our, our meeting when we discuss a possible pilot for this site. And that's when we'll discuss the implications and how school districts get funded. But Mr. Arvenidi said, stated that we're going to be taking money from the school district and the public should understand that that's really not the case. The, the school district is a taxing authority by itself. They can state how much money they want to collect from the public to run the school system under statute. You know, if they keep it under 2%, it doesn't have to go to a referendum and they can just say 2% increase every year and have everybody pay up. So the fact that whether this site is included or excluded from any calculations, the school district's still going to get their money. And if, if you want to look at what's happening in Morris Town, again, we're going to be talking about this in a couple of months. Just yesterday, Morris Town approved their own pilot in Morris Town. And you can read that article and see how it might affect the, the school funding formula. So I just wanted to correct that and urge residents to do their own homework on what pilots are and how the schools get funded. But I just want to assure everybody that this project is not taking any money away from the school district whatsoever. Okay? So now I will address my regular remarks and I thank, also thank my colleagues for their comments. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Jorphy and what Mr. Mankuso said already and what Mayor Wilson stated in the opening. This is a unique opportunity to preserve a historic structure. It's not only, it's not only unique in that this historic structure can be preserved, but the partner that's coming in has the expertise to do the proper restoration. And Mr. Mankuso and Mr. Jorphy referenced a letter that we received from the law firm representing the developer and representing possible redevelopment Restoration Hardware. And they addressed that specific concern about restoration of the historic site. In this letter, they also addressed a number of other things such as the, a solid wall or fence if the residents wanted. This, you know, this is all in writing and we can make this available to anybody who requests, can get a copy. They talk about a perimeter wall, it will be a solid Venetian wall. They address lighting. They address the fact that RH is not a wedding venue and they have never hosted a wedding in one of their facilities and have no intention to do so. They put that in writing for us. They talked about the operations, the noise impacts and such. One important element that was a concern to residents and I think concern to everybody is not only the impacts of the ongoing operations of Restoration Hardware, but the impacts on the residents of the whole construction process. So it's, I'm not sure how long it's going to take to build this thing, whether it's six months or 12 months or 18 months, I, I really have no idea. But an understandable concern of neighbors is what they're going to have to endure during that period. And Restoration Hardware, or I should say the law firm representing the developer and the Restoration Hardware stated that Restoration Hardware is willing to construct the buffer, wall slash fence, whatever it happens to be, in the first phase of the project as requested by the Crescent neighbors. So as Mr. Mankuso stated, the developer has, is working really hard with us and I feel working hard to accommodate a lot of the neighbor requests and they understand the impacts of what's going to happen and they're willing to work with us. The letter also states that they're going to continue to work with the township and residents through the site plan here. It's discussion and the open lines of communication don't end tonight. The lines of communication will remain open through the planning board process. See if I missed anything, there's lighting here. Lighting, I understand, I can understand how that's a real concern to neighbors. You know, what's going to be shining in their homes across the property line? And Restoration Hardware, or I should say the, the attorney addressed that, that they understand the concerns of light levels. They have worked in residential neighborhoods before and they're willing to work with neighbors, work with neighbors to identify light fixtures in an overall lighting plan that minimizes spillage and glare. So again, they're willing to work with the neighbors even on the type of lighting fixtures. So I think we have a very. So I think we have a, a very unique partner in developing this particular parcel. So yes, I'm, I think everybody would agree that we want to see the abbey preserved, but it's never, ever going to be preserved as a standalone structure. It can only be preserved in, in partnership and in unfortunately making the site more dense than it is today. It's not going to look like it has before. But in the end, with, again, with all the, for all the reasons that Mr. Jorphy and Mr. Mankuso and Mayor Wilson stated, and I know she's going to make an additional statement, I'm in agreement with my colleagues that this is the right thing to do for the township. And we have the right partner to actually make this a beautiful, beautiful space. And although it will have some impact on some neighbors and I totally understand their concerns and their fears, the future is unknown. Again, I think we have the right partner who is going to work with them to minimize all of these impacts, listen to their concerns, work on the details like light fixtures that will make this project long-term, I think, I hope, I pray, acceptable to all of the adjoining neighbors. But in the end, I think this is the right thing to do for the property and the right thing to do for Morris Township. And I look forward to supporting it when the vote comes around. So again, thank you, everybody, to the professionals, to my colleagues on the township committee, in particular, Mayor Wilson. And thank you to all the residents who spent a lot of hours participating in this process. I really, really appreciate it. And I urge you to continue your, your participation, urge you to continue your outreach through the site plan here. Because as we heard tonight, deviations, slight deviations could be made. We'll see what happens. But Mayor Wilson and I, as I stated before, both of us sit on the planning board. We are going to take everything that we have heard during this process to the planning board to ensure the planning board understands what this body has heard from the residents and to, to ensure that the promises that have been made by the developer through their letters and, and testimony will be adhered to. And I know it's a little bit of a leap of faith because the future is unknown. But you know, you have my promise that I truly am here to represent the residents of Morris Township first and foremost, and I think every member of this body feels the same way. And when, when it gets to the planning board, Mayor Wilson and I have the opportunity to speak up there, we will be representing the interests of the residents when we have our deliberations. Thank you, Mayor. I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson. So we've all made our comments. I, I would like to just make a few additional points here. It was brought up by several of our committee members, the, the letter that we have in our possession by RH. And to be clear for the record, that letter was sent to the township committee members and it's my understanding, it was sent to some of the residents in the neighborhood as well. And that the letter of dated September 22nd is basically an update of the letter that we received on August 31st. The update reflecting some of the suggestions that came from the discussions that were had with the neighbors in the last several days. So some of those things that have been added, we, we did add, or there is in addition to this letter, I call it phasing, which is the agreement to build the barrier, the buffer early on in the construction process. And one point I wanted to make there, a question came up just today as to whether the, I call it the phasing paragraph on Page 2 would also include the neighbors along Canfield. And it is my understanding that well, in other words, the buffers, if the plan is approved, the buffers will be built early on in the construction process, not just along Crescent, but also along Canfield. So I wanted to make that clear. And then there are other categories as Mr. Grayson and others have referenced. This information in this letter is, is, is the information that will go into the redevelopment agreement. And for the benefit of the public, the redevelopment agreement is a typically a very thick document. It's got all of the legal processes that are part of the plan. I, I meant to bring the, the example of the redevelopment agreement for the, call it minutes site. It's probably a half inch thick. And many of these points, if not all of these points, will be included in the redevelopment agreement. I'm not sure how that language will work out, if the letter will be attached and referenced or if it will actually be built into the redevelopment agreement. That's yet to be determined. And for the benefit of the public also, the redevelopment agreement is an ordinance. And between now and the October meeting, I would expect there to be ongoing negotiation of the language to be included in the redevelopment agreement. And then again, should the redevelopment plan that we're voting on tonight pass, then the next step would be at our next meeting, we would, we would vote first read introducing the ordinance that would, would be the ordinance for the redevelopment agreement. And if that passes, then at the next meeting, the November meeting, there would be a public hearing and presumably a vote at that meeting, or perhaps at a special meeting, to be determined. But what I'm getting at is that the redevelopment agreement is passed by ordinance. So as an FYI for everyone concerned. There were several things added to the letter of September 22nd that were not part of the letter of August 31st. And I, I would encourage anyone from the public who's interested, you can file an OPR and obtain this letter. It's available to the public. There is language in there about lighting. There's a language in there about a commitment to ongoing communications and other things as well. So this would be a very important document forming the basis or an important portion of the redevelopment agreement going forward if the redevelopment plan before us this evening passes. So, and I also did want to comment about the pilot agreement. The pilot agreement comes if, if, that's way down the line. If, if we pass the plan and we pass the redevelopment agreement. And by the way, you can't proceed with the plan unless the redevelopment agreement is passed. So that's like, it's yet another step in this ongoing process. Assuming that happens, then a re, a pilot plan would be brought up. That is also an ordinance. And that's a negotiation. And to say that the school was automatically excluded by law, there's no requirement that the school be included, but it's not prohibited either. And I've heard of towns that have negotiated into their pilot agreements a certain set aside for the schools. And I would recommend taking a look at that as part of the development of any pilot program that may come about. And I would also like to add that pilot programs are, they're, they're important. There are many sites where they have occurred in Morris Town. There's less in Morris Township. But they do, for the reasons we just said, have an impact on, on the, the school system because typically a pilot agreement does not send money, you know, provide money for the schools. And it's my opinion, and I, I've talked with others who agree, that it would benefit our community for us to have a, an informational session, a training session on pilots. I think it's a topic, especially now with the possibility that there may be a pilot agreement for this. I think people would be interested and be motivated to pay attention. And I would like to suggest that we do offer some type of informational session for the public to help people understand how pilots work. So with that, is there anyone else who has any discussion of things that have been brought up? They, I'm, I'm assuming the question that you asked has been answered. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm satisfied that we're not tying the hands of the planning board as long as they have the ability to deviate and allow variances from this redevelopment plan.
Okay. And then your other suggestion was to change the southern setback and put in parentheses Crescent Drive. Crescent Drive, sorry. And so we've agreed to that, correct? So.
Yeah. So with, with that said, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to approve this redevelopment plan. The title, I guess I should read the title for the record, the Abbey All New Paul Redevelopment Plan, Township of Morris, Block 8409 Lot 1, with the amendments of Section 111.1 dot E, both yields for building and that the parking setback should be, the parking back section should be amended to state setbacks from Southern, parentheses Crescent Drive, close parentheses, property line 20 feet, which is an increase from the current 15 feet. The second amendment being Section 3.G dot 6 related to fences and walls and that we add in that a wall or a fence abutting along Crescent Drive, a residence. Let's see. We're going to add in, let's see, what the exact language.
I wrote that down.
Do you have that?
I do.
Let's hear from Mr. Phillips on that, please.
So the lang, the language that I suggest at the end of that section.
Mr. Phillips has the exact sentence of it.
Go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
Sure. In, the, the new language at the end would be, you add the sense, in addition to landscape plantings, a fence or wall may be included in the buffer.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
So my motion will include the amendment into Section 3.G dot 2 of the language that Mr. Phillips just stated. And so.
Just for the record, that's 3.G dot 6.
No, two.
Two. Dot two.
I'm doing it in section two.
If you look, if you look further below, it says Section 2. That's where the amendment is going. The first, the first amendment is a setback from the Southern, parentheses Crescent Drive, close parentheses, property line is now 20 feet. And that we add that language regarding, regarding fences and walls to Section 3.G dot 2.
Okay.
That's right. And we're, we're seeing walls more and more during, during redevelopment projects. They, they've almost become ubiquitous at this point.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Carlson?
No, that, that, that's okay. I don't think it was important.
Okay. So was my motion, as stated, sufficient, Mr. Carlson, for the record?
I, I think it was, yes.
Very good.
Adam Kim, and I would second Committee Member Grayson's motion.
Mr. Mankuso. Okay. Is there any discussion? Do you want to add anything?
Yeah. Ms. Mayor, I, I'd like to make a few more comments, please.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Arbenidi.
First, I'll, I'll start and I thank you for your comments on the pilot money. But you, you know, we, we can spin the pilot money issue any way that we want, but at the end of the day, the assessed value of the property gets removed and bottom line is, we pay more in school tax. That's how that formula works. So when I say that school gets hurt or money gets taken away from the school, anyway, we slice it. There's less money going to the school, which then means that the residents pay more in tax.
Mr. Arbenidi, why don't, why don't you save the pilot comments for the conversation on the pilot?
The pilot has, is, is part of this deal because my understanding also is that RH won't, unless, unless there's a pilot component to it.
That, that may or may not be true, but that's not what's before the council tonight, the committee tonight. Sorry.
Okay. The other thing that I'd like to, to mention is, you know, we, we keep talking about the, you know, dense, density of townhouses and things like that. You know, politics of, I've said it before, politics of deception and fear is not a fair game to play. We keep talking about density. If, if it even got to that point, there wouldn't be more than 30 units. It's not as dense as some of these other monstrosities that we have in town that were approved by prior administrations. So my, a, a question that I have, which maybe is a rhetorical question. From all of the comments that I heard, the reason why we're moving forward with this is, at the end of the day, to preserve the abbey. And so as much as I'm always in favor of preserving historical buildings, as I mentioned before, the whole building is not being saved. So it will not be the abbey anymore. So two more comments and then we can take our move. You know, in, in my opinion, this whole process has been a subterfuge because it, it pretty much was predetermined that this was going to get approved already. And so we went through this whole process, bringing all the residents in, trying to get as best of, of a deal as we can from RH, which again, only benefits RH and the, and the landowner, not the residents on the Randolph side of town. Definitely doesn't benefit the residents that live right next door to the property. So I'm going to ask one question. If you lived in that neighborhood, would you want this in your backyard? Because once we make this decision to move forward with this, we can't turn back. This is bad for Morris Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arbenidi. I will say.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, that there's one more thing that I wanted to say. You know, by, by us approving such a redevelopment plan and allowing such a large retailer to come in that corridor there, we're, we're, we're creating a precedent that will then allow other large retailers to come in. And it's not far-fetched to see somewhere down the road that Madison Avenue will look like Route 10 and/or Route 22. We have car dealerships already on, on that road. We're bringing Restoration Hardware there. Who knows what else is going to come once we open the floodgates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arbenidi. I have a few comments in response. First of all, your notion that this is pre-approved and that as if the decision was made before there's any discussion is straight up false. That's not true. And I speak for myself, I, I guess I can't speak for others, but that is not true. This for me was a lengthy sort of agonizing process. I thought long and hard about this. So for you to imply that it's predetermined and that I didn't give any thought or I was going to do it anyway, no matter what, that's just wrong. So I take exception to that comment.
Mayor, if I, Mayor, if I may, just one, one second. The effort that you put in to try to get the best deal possible in this and Jeff and Mark and everybody and our planners, I appreciate that effort. I appreciate the effort that it got to where it got. I just don't, at the end of the day, I just don't think it's a good idea for us to have this. And so. I don't want to diminish, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to diminish the work and effort that was put in, especially by you, because I know that you spent a lot of time on this. So I, I know you did. And thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. Also, just a quick comment. When you say it's not saving the abbey, I, I'm passionate about historic preservation and I will say that it does not preserve the entire building. That's true. And it bothers me that the servants quarters is the portion that's going to be removed. And it does occur to me that there's, you know, we, we sort of act as if that's somehow less significant than the rest of the building. And from a historic perspective, at least my own, that there's an implicit assumption there about what constitutes value. And I would just encourage people to take a look at that and I agree with you. It doesn't preserve the entire value of abbey. And also to me, I do agree that some of the, those big old beautiful oak trees, yes, they're part of the historic aspect of the building. And it, it makes me sad that some of them would be taken down. And to me, that's under the category of this is not perfect, you know? But it does preserve most of the building and many of the trees. most of the building and many of the trees. And in fact, on the conversations that I had with residents recently, it was interesting to me to be onsite, looking at the map, and to actually point out, this tree is not going, this tree would be, in other words, to get specific on which trees are identified by the circles on the map. And that was one example of adding information, the added information that came from those discussions that I found helpful, and I think some of the residents found helpful as well. Because people made assumptions that all of these trees were going to go, when in fact, that was not true. Certain ones did, and certain ones did not. So the information that came out of those discussions was helpful. I don't believe that putting the abbey on Madison Avenue is setting a precedent that we're going to create Route 10 on Madison Avenue. It just doesn't add up to me. So those are my comments in response to Mr. Arbenes. And if anyone else has anything to offer, now would be the time. Mr. Grisal?
Again, since Mr. Arbenes brought up the school funding again, I feel like I don't want the public to be confused about this issue. And we will be speaking about it further when we have discussion on the pilots. But Morris Town and Morris Township are in a very unique situation with a shared school district. And when it's a single town running a pilot, it's a whole different show. But when you have a shared school district in two different towns, it creates a little bit of mystery at times.
Tension, tension maybe the word you're looking for?
Inequity, that could be a good word, inequity. And that will be explained at the public hearing when we talk about the pilots. But what happens is the tax base changes. So yes, perhaps, as Mr. Arbenes said, that this will not be included in the tax base for the school district. It is included in the tax base for the municipality. And so, the school funding formula, the schools still get the funding that they request. They are a taxing authority. They get all the money they need from across the entire tax base. So this property won't be going to the tax base for the school district, but 95% of it, as will be explained in the future, will be going to Morris Township. So for Morris Township residents, taxes are not going up. It's going to be a wash. What, you know, what comes in for municipal taxes from this project will offset or more than offset the cost that you would be paying to the school district if this project were included, or this property were included in the school funding formula. But what you'll learn at the hearing on the pilot is, what's happening in Morris Town and the pilots that they have enacted over the years, how that is affecting Morris Township residents and causing the inequity that I see in the school funding formula that I think needs to be addressed by the state. I don't want to get into it here, but I just want to set the record straight for the public that this project has nothing to do with the amount of money the school district will receive. They are going to get every penny that they deserve as a taxing authority and that we collect, and it just affects the tax base. And we will explain to the public the entire tax base across Morris Town and Morris Township when we go back here. But I really don't want the public to be confused on that notion and feel like we're cheating the school district in any way because we are not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grisal. Is there anything else?
Mayor, if I may ask a question of Mr. Carlson. Mr. Carlson, why was I stopped from talking about pilot, but Mr. Grisal gets to talk for four minutes about it? You know, I get the feeling like this is animal farm, where some pigs, all pigs are created equal, but some pigs are more equal than others. That is.
I agree with Mr. Carlson that it shouldn't have been brought up in the first place. And the only reason I'm talking about it is because I think your comments.
Jeff, I don't have a problem that you're talking about it.
Yeah, Mr. Arbenes, who spelled his name wrong on Zoom, we gave you that, you know, I gave you the leash to talk about that. I did not stop you. And pardon, Mr. Grisal, for responding.
Anyone else have anything to say about pilots? Mr. Grisal has made his points. Mr. Arbenes, do you have anything else to add?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on then.
Could you fix your name, please?
Pardon?
Mr. Arbenes, I wish you would fix his name, please.
Okay, we're going to play that game now, Mr. Carlson?
Well, you've been playing games for nine months, so he's short.
If there's anyone else who has any questions or comments, now would be the time. Okay, we have a motion on the table moved and seconded. And with that, I will ask Semelio for a roll call.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Arbenes.
No.
Mr. Dorphy.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Cuso.
Yes.
Mr. Grisal.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes. I, Catherine Wilson, Mayor, declare the ordinance adopted and finally passed, approve the same, and direct that the clerk publish proper notice thereof in the newspaper and to record the ordinance in the proper place. So with that, we have passed the redevelopment plan ordinance 07-20. And we will be, as sort of was alluded to during the course of our meeting, our next step will be to, between now and our October meeting, we will be working to develop the redevelopment agreement. Many of the things that were brought up tonight will be included in that agreement. We can continue to be in touch with residents in the meantime. And at the October meeting, we will have an ordinance introducing the redevelopment agreement. And we will also have at that meeting, I believe it's a resolution that we will vote on to officially designate RH as the developer for this project. Oh, that is in the redevelopment agreement. Sorry, it's not a separate thing. It's included. The designation of RH as the developer is included as part of the text of the redevelopment agreement.
Well, about four or five documents for your consideration.
At that meeting?
We'll be working on that with Mr. Carlson and Mr. Phillips.
Okay, I'm not sure if the public can hear that, but there will be work between now and the October meeting. And at the October meeting, we will have in place a redevelopment agreement for introduction. And then, at some point, there will be a public hearing on that and a final vote. So, and then after that, will come this pilot agreement to be continued on that. Okay, with that, the final portion of our special meeting tonight, as I said at the beginning, all township committee meetings will be township committee meetings. We include public comment. And we have many people online with us. And I'm going to ask for Mr. Daley's help in recognizing people who wish to share their views. And we are going to ask to people to keep to the five minutes. So with that, do we have, do we have anyone who would like to, my goodness, I don't see any digital hands.
No one's putting their hands up. No one's coming forward.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to offer any comments?
Wow, Mayor, hugely.
I know. It's surprising.
You're ubiquitous that there's lots of people out there wanting to talk to us.
Hands are popping up.
Okay. Now, we have two people. So we'll start with Chelsea Murray. Please say your name and address for the record.
Hi, I am Chelsea Murray. I am a new resident of Morris Township. I don't even know how to get my face on here, but I do just want to say I'm extremely proud of the town I'm now part of, who's voted for this. And I believe it can only stand to improve the town and everything that you guys stand for. So thank you.
Thank you. I did not catch your address, Chelsea. I'm not sure if you said it or I just missed.
Sorry, 67 Overlook Road.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments.
Of course.
Jody Marcus.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would, Jody Marcus, 30 Brookfield Way. And I want to commend the committee for doing an excellent job. We have never seen such great thoroughness in the town before, and I commend you. You looked at all the possibilities. You made all the, you know, really focused on detail, and I appreciate it as a towns person. And I also want to say, living on the other side of town, I don't mind. I feel it's a big benefit for us as well. And I'm not worried about the school thing, whatever that was, wasn't sure what that was. But I'm looking forward to it. I think it's a way to preserve as much of the abbey as we can, and it will stand as beautiful as it has always been. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, next up, Tom Maoli. Please say your name and address for the record.
Yes, Tom Maoli, 85 Rock Citykis Road, Far Hills, New Jersey.
Go ahead, Mr. Maoli.
Great. I just want to commend the planning board and congratulate them because I think they made a brilliant decision. And I think that the diligence they did for this township while not getting paid and doing this as a volunteer work was absolutely stupendous and amazing. And I wish I could get you out to my town. But congratulations, and I think you made a brilliant decision.
Thank you, Mr. Maoli.
Mayor.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Grisal?
Just to correct the record.
I know, we're not the planning board.
Well, we're not the planning board. I want to reflect that this board does get a slight stipend. I call it babysitting money, but we're not completely volunteers. It really is a volunteer job, but we can get a stipend for sitting off the township committee. The planning board does not.
I can have some now.
Yeah, we joke whether it's 10 cents an hour, 20 cents an hour, or a nickel at night. But just to correct the record, the planning board is a fully volunteer board that gets no competition. We are the only.
We are the township committee, not the planning. Thank you. Okay, Alita Karas.
She's coming up. There she is.
Hi. Yes, Alita Karas, 60 Old Glen Road. And I would also like to commend the township committee on the transparency that has been carried through this whole process. I just have been really impressed with the amount of interaction that all of you have had with the residents. No one can possibly feel that they didn't know everything that was going on and have the ability to reach out and ask questions. As part of the transportation committee, I've also been over there to look over the site and seen the mayor trying to address things like parking and the traffic, because she knows those were the major concerns of the people. So her main goal at all times was keeping in mind the concerns of the residents, and that's been very impressive. So I'm sure going forward, as this continues, that will continue as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alita. And I do see overlap here with the transportation committee.